St. Luke Hospital, providing state-of-the-art healthcare services to meet all your needs. St. Luke was recently remodeled in 2012 to include a new physical therapy area, a new patient care area, as well as a beautiful new entrance. It also has a current CT scanner to provide your scanning needs. St. Luke Hospital, right here at home, right here for you. Marion Dye and Fixer, a Bradbury Group company that manufactures a wide range of custom dyes and fixtures for metal forming applications with an emphasis on quality. Marion Dye and Fixer supports the Marion community.
We have four council persons present, so we do have a forum, a solicitor agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections that need to be made at this time? Second, all of us in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried four to zero. I see approval of the consent agenda. Do you want any notes pulled for further discussion? Motion for approval.
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Chris, will be accepted. Okay, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried four to zero. Number four.
Based upon the action of the council last meeting, you have in front of you the actual real estate and purchase and development agreement with Prairieland Partners. They are looking at lot seven of the industrial park, which is the lot directly east of their established facility. The contract is a standard contract used in other activities, and we do have the buyback proceedings in case they ever did decide to use it for purposes of then their storage of their equipment.
Did we put an entryway in there?
That was not part of the negotiated agreement.
That's what I was going to say, I didn't think it was about it, but just wondering if it was what we done or not. Anything else?
Doug, is the buyer's covenant going to be actually on the deed?
Buyer's covenant.
Which talks about...
Oh, the buyback capability? We are providing the warranty needs to be filed, so I'm sure it can't be included.
Well, if it's not...
Is that how much deed?
I don't think it's a much deed, so...
We can put it on there, I'll change it.
If we're going to have it, I think it ought to be right off there, so...
Yeah. Put a cloud on that title.
On a deed, on a deed you're saying?
Yes, which will...
That's what I...
...cut the title in.
Okay, anything else?
I'd like to approve, second.
Any further discussion? If not, all of us in favor raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carried four to zero. Number five.
We also have the document that was drafted for the lease of a small parking area directly west of the Elgin incorporating part of the city-owned parking facility just south of our building here. This has been reviewed by the owners of the Elgin, Stork Elgin Bed and Breakfast LLC, and it is agreeable to that party, and this is effectively what I discussed in the last meeting.
Do we have to pay property tax on this property, the whole part or not?
No.
Thanks, I just... And also, I was wanting to know if we could take pictures, you know, of what it is now and then each year, maybe then you've had something to have a record for as far as seeing it, as well as...
Everything down.
And that we could be attached to it each year, and then you have something to go by if you have that. Which one is it, sixty-six? Number five, maybe, help with that? Number four, I know it was less, a little bit if you want to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have to motion for approval?
If there's a change in ownership in the hotel, this would still apply?
No, it's non-assignable. It only belongs to the current owners and the historic Elgin Bed and Breakfast LLC.
How about heirs? In case something could happen to him or...
It's actually tied to the legal entity, so as long as the legal entity stays in perpetuity, then it would still be in place.
Anything else? Motion for approval.
So moved.
Move by Todd, is there a second?
Sergeant.
Second by Jerry. Any further discussion? All of us in favor say aye. Raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carried four to zero. I get your answer.
Okay. I would like to bring before the council the proposal for marketing the property at eight twenty-eight Roosevelt, formerly the Arby's Building. Reference to the failed business have been removed, and we've got signed each other. My proposal is tied to putting this on the internet listing service for the state. It's known as location one, it actually gives its national exposure to the property. Along with that, in order to market the property and need to have the parameters of the council, firstly would be the asking price, and based on a market evaluation of similar-sized building with similar amenities, I would recommend a hundred ninety-five as the beginning asking price. I would propose that if the property would be considered for a lease-to-own option, so we can list it two different ways and market through. In my proposal, in order to cover the related expenses that we're incurring on a monthly basis, it would be twenty-three fifty on the property. And then I need to find out if it would be acceptable to perhaps subdividing the building and marketing it to two separate halves. We have half of the building that has improvements, half of it is an open ground space.
How did you come up with your hundred ninety-eight thousand?
Hundred ninety-eight thousand, I went online and did comparables to properties in the state of Kansas in that same building size with the same construction. The office sizes vary in each property, but most of them are between one eighty-five to two hundred thousand for a commercial-grade building of this nature that I found.
That was the asking price?
That's the asking price, okay.
I was just wondering if we could just go ahead and spread it to two hundred?
We possibly could, just from a marketing site, if we put it at two hundred, when you put in the search criteria, it's going to be people looking from two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
If we do one ninety-eight, it'll drop it in, or one ninety-eight-five, it'll allow us that anybody puts in a one fifty, it'll still put our property in there to draw interest towards. While initially I'm talking about this, in order to, if we do decide in the future to mark directly through Landmark or another commercial real estate company directly, we'll need to have our asking price to begin with, and then if we're willing to lease, we'll set it.
Is there any challenge with putting it on the website?
There are not. Because of our membership in several of the economic development organizations, it's a benefit that I can leverage at no cost, and it'll get us on at least two different listing sites that I know of that site selection managers use routinely.
Do you have any kind of a track record on that particular site of any, as to its success or not?
It's worked very successfully in a couple of communities in the state of Kansas. Honestly, many of them don't go in and update often enough to keep the property relevant.
So, could you do that if we have a listing with a realtor?
That is correct.
Could we have on that side as well?
Doug and I have spoken, and if we do list it with a commercial realtor, we will write in the listing agreement, a clause, that we have the right to sell it without them, and then the commission will be foregoing a specific amount assigned for it. That's why the property is not listed in Landmark at this point, we're still negotiating, they're wanting to work too much.
Okay.
They want their six percent, and if not, for some reason they want almost seven percent from us, so we're still talking about that.
Okay, that answers that question.
And from a leasing standpoint, if that is an option, it'll help us cover, you know, the taxes on that building are running us a thousand twenty dollars a month. Our mortgage payment is thirteen hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents a month. Utilities on it currently, we only have electrical, we do not have water at the site. It's running about sixty-five dollars a month for us to maintain. So on the short term, if we could have the ability to possibly lease this, subdivide it, lease it, at least we could offset expenses until we can market successfully.
Okay, so you would say that if we had a chance to lease it, then we, before we sell it, then you could, we could go in ahead and do that?
I'm just asking for the permission to pursue both avenues.
Right, and that's what you were proposing?
Correct, so it's just not setting empty while we're trying to market the property.
What, what would you think might be interested to do it that way, as far as a business in the front part or just a warehouse part, maybe?
Actually, I've already been approached by someone interested in taking what would be the north half of the building, using it for a gymnastics training center, because it has the high ceilings and all of the space. But they're not a large enough entity to take on ten thousand square feet.
Got it.
It felt like they could take on five thousand. And then that would still leave us the developed side of the building, it has the offices, the restroom, as well as warehouse space, and all we have to do is erect the wall to separate the two.
So if that were the case, then that would be, if we sold it, maybe they would be able to go ahead with that same agreement and keep the lease out to them as far as if they bought the whole building or...
Yes, we'll be writing the lease with a right of separation, so we won't get boxed in. Someone leasing from us would stop the sale of the property. We would have a clause written in of the lease. The clause will have to get them a reasonable amount of time, maybe a ninety days, something along that.
Well, that might be a way though, if they saw a way of using that other side.
Correct.
That might be a...
And if I had a lease, then for me, marketing the other half of the building, I would be actively pursuing complimentary.
Right.
This is just for example, if we were to lease half of it to the university, someone and so forth, a physical education or, excuse me, a gymnasium on the other half, then it would be complimentary for the family, where children could go to their classes, and X class, whatever the case may be, the parents then would have a full-service gym on the other side. And that would be a lease situation, so we can still maintain and maintain the property if we pursue and the market is over, like investors or like paying back in the future.
Right now, I'm just in favor of just trying to get rid of the period for a while. Hope that the rest of you can stay here. What's your thoughts on?
I don't think anything that would reduce our costs.
Yeah, as long as you can get out of the, if you do the lease, as long as you're able to get out of that and do sell it, that's your thing. If it sets empty and not get any money out of it, well, at least we'd be getting something out of it if we leased it.
If we get a lease or that's going to take care of the building?
Well, part of the, excuse me, part of the lease agreement, at a minimum, they have to have three hundred thousand dollars insurance coverage, or I would not present you with that offer, if they not have that clause.
And alterations, you say that they might want to put in there too, it sounds like?
Well, on a lease, then they would surrender any improvements, physical improvements to the property when they make it. So whatever enhancement they do to the area...
And that'd be subject to our approval as well.
Absolutely, at this point, I'm just looking at what the parameters are so I can start marketing the lease.
I, I don't like the asking price, but that may be a reality of, of where we're at, and I appreciate you explaining how you may have come up with that for the marketability.
Correct, and I understand the concerns, because on the tax rule, the land is appraised at fifty-five hundred, the building, two hundred and fifty thousand, twenty dollars, for a total of two fifty-five. Our mortgage currently under the thing is two thirty-five, too. But again, given the current economic conditions of a building of this size, my concern is if we listed, and even the mortgage price, we probably will not have any brokers.
Well, we haven't any, you could probably speak more to that, to the number of brokers we've had so far, or even talked about.
From a standpoint of a serious business that may relocate, I could really only put my hat on one, and they have yet to respond now that it's been opened, so...
But there, that building is certainly worth what we would be paying for, that's for sure. I would think, I haven't been up there yet, but it could have been a bit for that.
New construction would not, but that quality of building, you know...
Those are anything else that we were going to have incentives for that besides having that price? I'd say that's a pretty good incentive, but what else would you think as far as payments or anything like that? Were you in favor of putting a lease, on lease purchase, or you know, maybe to tell you, whatever? Maybe that would be to have a more sense about that, too. Has anybody come in with a lease purchase ready, as to wanting to fight on lease purchase?
To me, a cash buyer versus a lease purchase buyer is going to be talking about the same amount of outlay, it's just depending on how they want to finance it. So I don't really know, I think both options should be on the table right now. I think that's what Roger's really asking for, is give him some latitude, so within these parameters, he can research various ways that we can get the same move, you know, a little bit of something's there and all or nothing. And so just, I think Roger's doing the right thing by coming to the council. I will remind the council, they did say, you know, eight months ago, two hundred thousand would be an acceptable number, so here we are. I mean, I think, we don't like the fact that's where it's at, but at the same time, we're talking about over twelve thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes, and we're holding it for speculative purposes, we want to get something back for it. So I think the request to the council is just give him the latitude to be able to, at least preliminarily, negotiate something that we can bring to the council, that you guys can obviously have final approval on, but give a, you know, give him some options so we can try to have within these parameters a chance to market the same and get something going out there.
Well, I think that asking price would be the first, the first and foremost thing we're going to have to prove, and then...
Well, this is, I don't envision the council approving anything except a consensus on direction, and Susan can correct me if I'm wrong. Roger just needs to know, we're not vote, I mean, I guess we could vote to set this price, I would not, Roger needs a direction, and by consensus, we can do that, and I'm open to the three options, the sale, a lease without a purchase option, and then a lease purchase option. So you have three, three avenues to look at based on this, and since I don't consider this again as a voting, but a general consensus, that if you negotiate, we will not pay closing costs, split closing costs, if we're going to deduct our price, purchase price, if we're in the ballpark of a hundred ninety-eight-five, all the costs will be up to the purchaser, so, except prorating the taxes, that, I think that...
And any ultimate decision on the property will be presented to you in very specific terms, and you can finally approve it.
But he also, I mean, he also...
In order to start marketing, I need a basis, to share the input.
Yeah, I'm with Todd, I think it's, all three points are a good basis to get started and get something going on it. I'd prefer to sell it myself than lease it, but whether we get to cut down the cost from foot to the city.
The other would be, is I would have it direct you and Doug to work on a... I would go talk with county appraiser and see if we can get the taxes.
They need a qualified seller, an official appraiser before they're considering.
Well, I think there will be other sales that you can go get at the county that should support them.
We'll keep an eye on them.
Well, we have one valid sale within the last twelve months, is our other spec building that we sold well into the market, that should be one right there. I can't remember what they had it appraised at, but we did not get appraised, county appraised value, so we should have one sale of our, of our own that should help with that, but I would, I would contest the tax amount on it.
Sounds to me like you've got your marching orders, so just going to have a final approval.
I've got two head nods, but I haven't seen two others. Very good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Looks like you have some pieces of...
Yeah, the railroad crossing on the southwest part of town that includes Berber and Grant that comes into Jackson's Edition from the southeast, that was taken out on the railroad and made track modifications so they could increase the speed coming through town. As of this date, it has yet to be replaced. Talking to a local manager, track assistant, they have actually come in and said, they didn't think it was going to be put back as a crossing. So I spoke to the regional director for the state of the city, and after a fairly lengthy phone conversation, the impression was that they would like to work with communities on railroad crossings, that it would probably be best to have the explicit orders of the governing body of the city, that you allow the city administrator to send a letter specifically requesting that the crossing be reopened and returned to its original use and intent. So that's really just kind of on my part, I would ask the council by vote and by motion of vote, approve the city administrator to send communication back to Union Pacific requesting the crossing be returned fully.
This is the one you go up?
Correct.
Have you been down that section, was it?
No.
He's told we didn't take it out. Something else, probably, have they not?
Well, all railroad crossings include the big bridge timbers to help protect the rails, and then also get you the same height as the elevation. All the bridge timbers, even in the middle of the rail, that have been removed, and they have all been stacked up as barricades on each side of the crossing. And it would be my request that that be returned back. The greatest concern I have is I don't know what catastrophe may occur on Bridge Street, but if that were to occur, we would have residents that would have no access whatsoever in and out to their own private residence. So that really becomes kind of a safety concern and something that we have to have access off that south side.
I would move that you go right ahead and give a strong recommendation to open it up, second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You've got everything you need to know, Mr.?
Oh, sorry.
The clerk. All of us in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? And Susan, you need to have any part of that or not?
I think he'll just send me a copy of the letter, he and I both, I've talked to Mr. Benjamin, who he's sending it to on behalf of the county, so I'm sure we can work that out. Thank you, Doug.
All right, we're down to the department head reports. I've been asked to ask you who takes care of the housing, department housing, place up there, Corlent House Lot. Is it still done by the school?
The Victory Plaza issue?
Right.
Yes, it would be probably Lucasfilm.
Okay, well, it's in bad shape, they told me. I haven't been up to it, but they've always got pig weeds on or some kind of weeds.
Okay.
And also, I had someone address their crossings, I mean, their entryways on the driveway into a business. What is our ordinance or what is that? I know you told me one time when we were talking about the wheel-in or the wheel-in effect down there, they were wanting something done, or you worked with David, what, what is our authority, or what is their authority, or what did they have to do to maintain their interest to the business?
If it's an existing crossing, then what we typically do is back a curb. The city's requirement is back a curb in those entryways, that includes the rolling curb or the drainage ditch that's used to actually enter into that property.
The drainage part?
Correct.
And on the rolling curb?
Right.
But they, but if this, from there on, they would have to do it, and I think that was the case down there, they had to be, it was, you know, there don't have any asphalt or anything, and there, then they'll take this one down either.
Typically, that's your ingress egress apron, and that is a responsibility of the business or the homeowner.
Do we have an ordinance on that?
Probably not.
Okay, because this was a concern that's been a long time coming, in fact, it was by, by former employee that told them that they would be getting a new crossing there, and so I just wondered if we could have an ordinance, or how, how did you determine the policy that this was set to be a policy?
The policy, as I understand, has been handed down, and Marty's really kind of in charge of that at this point, but the obligation for the improvements upon a city street incurred to the back of curb, so we include drainage. It's in the city's best interest to make sure that we maintain efficient drainage of additional properties across the property owner in our easement that goes to our, either surface drain or to our storm sewer system. So if, by logic, it follows that we would be responsible for maintaining a proper flow of stormwater across our easement area that includes our curb and gutter and the street itself.
I'll try to think of this, what I was talking to you about, and I said I was going to find out what, what we did have, and then I'll talk to you about that, because I...
Kind of taken care of under new construction, where they are responsible for the curb gutter, rolling gutter on new, on new construction, and then anything after that is our responsibility.
We did up on...
Sounds good.
It sound, well, what did we do up on Cedar Street? That was a residential, but how did we, is it anything that had a broken thing, broken...
The only thing that I've been involved with is at the industrial park, and that's part of the negotiations of land that the city had, that would add additional entrances over city-owned property that was being transferred to private ownership, and that's a negotiated area. If you're talking about residential areas of bare dirt that is privately held, that needs access off of a road that may include a drainage ditch, I'm unaware, you'll need to give me a couple of days to figure out where that's at.
I think they took some pictures when they were doing that to make sure that they had, is that right?
When we did Cedar Street, the city did, from what Marty told me, up to the sidewalks, we took care of the apron part, and then the residents had to take care of the rest of the traffic.
So that they hadn't, didn't say that they had broken by that?
Correct, we did take pictures, just to document what this, how the sidewalks and drives look like.
Yeah, if you're doing utility work, and any of the repairs and utility damages existing structure, that's responsibility of the city.
Right.
Absolutely.
Like locusts.
Right, yeah, with the water line replacement, locusts.
I'll talk to you about, maybe you can look into that, okay? I'll talk to you about it, maybe you can get into that, okay?
Well, we do have, that would be, we do have some rolling gutter, and I know you had some, you and Darren had some on the list, but we have some other locations where gutter is an issue in the street.
Is that alleyways?
No, no, I'm talking.
Business?
Business, down to, and some, and some of the residential areas as well. We have curb and gutter and rolling gutter issues, and we, we had one, we had one business that asked about that, and they were also talking about their apron, all the land, which we, which we told them is not our responsibility, so that is, that is something else that between you and Darren is looking at, the list of, of that, those curb and gutter.
I have two pages of curb and gutter repairs that we're working on that's on the list.
The one list on there, the one I told you about, that was done four years ago too, that got damaged by a.
You're more than welcome to come to my office, I'll pull the list out and we'll compare the list.
It was damaged by a truck, the, the refuse truck and things, told me four years ago that it was, so, maybe I'll see if it's on the list. Okay, anything else for Marty? I have that for Chris.
I have a question, there's a, on Freeburner Street, my house, I think you had to do the water repair, and it's just rock right now, and I hope you don't throw rock in there, there's going to be some pretty deep holes in it.
On the street itself?
Yeah.
Okay, what hundred block do you know?
I think it's a two-hundred block, on the west side.
South?
North.
North Freeman?
I'm sorry.
South Freeman, yeah.
Two-hundred block, up there.
It's incredible how it is, I don't know why.
They were just there this morning, put a dock in there.
Oh, okay. Taking care of.
Fixed.
It's fixed. Take it off your list.
No, don't take it off.
I've been driving down here, I've been jockeying over the roads a lot.
You said, when I talked to you the other day, you sent it to your staff meeting, we asked some things about what the CDVG grant program on the, for streets, are you going to get a timeline type of thing set out for us, so we'll know when it's going to be?
Okay, I spoke to bond council today, we've also touched base with CDVG. At this point, we feel as though it's now on the bonding schedule, and our bonding attorney will be putting those documents together, I'm sure you'll see something at the next meeting, and then we can put some preliminary timeline together for when we can actually try to start working on streets.
Okay, because I would be willing even to have a spatial meeting in order to get something started on the streets here.
All we really have to do is identify the, the total amount of the bond that we wish to apply for, and if it's going to be, what kind of issue it will be, and then we will just tag those on the CDVG and do the bid scope and the specifications, do a bid opening, and then we will be able to proceed to bid, or proceed to work.
Okay, now, does that include your fourth street?
That, the project will include fourth street and will not include CDVG funds, so it won't be leveraged funds.
Okay, so you're talking about maybe in my next, next meeting, we'll have something to do.
We'll have the timetable for the bonding process, yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I see our chief of police is not here, do you want to, as I asked you to, to maybe review the fourth of July?
Yeah, we have a current ordinance that was adopted in August of two thousand twelve, and the preliminary, or the, the main points that everybody should be aware of is that the setting off of fireworks is regulated to within nine AM to ten PM, July first and second, and nine AM to midnight on the third and fourth, and there is no discharge of fireworks on July fifth, in the city limits of Marion.
And what, they can start selling when?
At this point, the interpretation is you can sell pretty much whenever, but there's only one fireworks stand, and they have determined they will not sell before they can shoot, so they will be open.
What's that? I can't find it, it's all discharge.
Well, I know the fireworks stand is going to be selling within the terms that they can be discharged.
When are they going to get their permit?
They've already got it, you approved it a month ago.
Well, I dropped it in. Okay, anything else for the chief of police? His gun range down there, when he talked about the residents using it, are they going to be able to use it with the, what is their terms of, of being, wouldn't be able to use that, certain days or?
The initial terms of the agreement have been presented to the city attorney, we're working with an appropriate fee level, we want to make the fee level so that it is not necessarily prohibited, but we don't want it just being mobbed west down there, so we're, we're mindful of that, and that will be part of the fee structure.
Okay, good.
And I think I also need to check with the insurance company or somebody does too, to see how that would affect the city.
Is that lockable?
The gate is lockable, but pedestrian traffic, there's no way of securing that unless you want the chain link fence and concertina wire.
No.
No, okay.
Anything else for the chief of police? Okay, we'll take up, I want you, Susan, to get in.
Yeah.
Our city clerk?
Well, I have started working on the budget for next year, right now I'm doing, looking at a budget amendment, just because we didn't have the refunding on, and then also with the, the building that we have, we've just got to, got to go through some numbers around a little bit, so we will be trimming that pretty soon, but if you guys would like to go ahead and schedule a work session for maybe next Monday, since it's not council week, we'll do a financial and budgetary work session.
I would, someone did that with me luckily.
What time of work best for all council members?
You want to go five o'clock?
No, it's July first.
July first.
You want to go five o'clock?
I'd prefer to go after business at Herschel myself.
Let's go five o'clock.
Five o'clock, work session here, city council room, July first.
And it won't be over an hour and a half this time. You gonna shoot for that?
We'd shoot for anything.
Boy, if you pay a fee.
Got it, bud. Roger and Antillo, would this be the time that you're going to start your process too?
Yes.
All right.
The process being the audit training?
Right, if you have anything to start teaching us about financial.
Yes, the program that we're working on targets to twenty thirteen state audit of municipalities and cities from Kansas, and we'll be going over that as financial training that was recommended from the twenty twelve audit.
Okay, so let's just set our work session then for July the first at five o'clock, right? Chris? Todd?
Not for sure whether I'll be here, but that's fine.
And the other one, Jerry might be still harvesting too, but this, ten forty, I haven't said that, and it may be out of your fifty minutes, and nobody's filled up, okay? How about you, Julie, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Okay, then with public forum? Hello there, Mr.? I think we have a new person to be introduced back there at our reporters' desk, not moving.
Well, Olivia is a new reporter with us, I don't know if she's going to be covering city council or that, but, you know, she will be doing affairs around town, covering things.
And you're, say your name again?
Olivia Hazelwood.
And you're going, you're on job right now, huh?
On job.
Good. Welcome to our city.
Thank you.
She's one of three new people, the record.
She what?
She's one of three new.
Three good ones?
We're going to have two new reporters, and Oliver Good, who is a Marion resident, is going to do some writing, do some advertising.
Good.
Joel, Joel Wright, he's going to do sports.
Any other public persons, are you a public person now, now?
No, not now.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm just trying to keep these down here under control. I'm waiting.
You're waiting with the wood?
And that was the end of the door, I was waiting for, and it was a little cheer. But I've got my con, instead of my cheer, and it was a discussion, I'll always say hi. Host?
Host is scared.
And?